My name is Quinn Robinson. I live out in Andersonville, District 4. I just have a couple of comments tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to present these to you. The first thing was that the application that Dominion made according to the packet last time, and I think this was raised earlier, was complete as of the submission in August. How they've been able to extend this and why it was done, I do not know. But effectively what happened was me on the 26th of September precluded people from giving their comments. The presentation by Mrs. Picard was lengthy and off point. But the issue is, it was nothing that wasn't available elsewhere. I'd like to point out, she said that FERC sponsored an independent report on the hazardous materials. FERC is not an independent agency. They are paid, funded entirely by the oil and gas industry. To say that they're independent is a real exaggeration. And further, the hysmat, the hazardous materials, Department of Transportation is underfunded. They do virtually no inspections. They don't have the money. And they rely on the industry to do them and accept them. And remember, the people at Dominion have already falsified the documents to the force of those additionally because this is a process that EPA claims to defer also. I do want to mention that last time we were here, one of the deputies asked me to sit down and stop taking pictures. And I've given you a copy of the Freedom of Information Act. It says that pictures are permitted and actually can even meet in a facility that does not facilitate recording or taking pictures. And I just mentioned this because he said at the time that everybody had to sit down. Other people were up and walking around. And it just seemed strange to me that he would be able to exercise this kind of authority. I'm going to suggest, Mrs. Picard, that the deputies have appropriate training in terms of Freedom of Information Act and what the limits are for their responsibilities. The other thing, there are a couple of things, but just to be quick about this. They've mentioned about the Subcommittee on Conditions to be reviewed and proposed for Dominion. I hope you open that up to the community. And I have one that I've been thinking about for some time. And it would be a $2 billion surety endowment. The money would be given to the County of Buckingham to hold as long as the pipeline's in function. And it would cover any needs, requirements, compensation, anything of that nature. And it'd be interest-free. And at the end of all this business, it would be given back to Dominion. But it's... Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
I will read flowers, Third District. And I want to comment on your procedure. An applicant is allowed an unlimited amount of time to present an issue and answer questions. Opponents or proponents are not. For example, say a large commercial peak factory is being proposed. Health and environmental experts are asked to give testimony but are only given a certain amount of time and are not able to present all the valuable information because of this limitation. Shouldn't a situation such as this be given a little more time? Is the time limit more important than the long-term consequences of any decision? The consequences could be good, bad, or neutral. But I believe the extra time used to get as much information is very important. If this peak form were proposed next to your property, you would want careful deliberations. And I just, I feel like people, especially some of the experts who have information that is valuable, you know, not just somebody like me who comes up and says, "Well, I don't like this." I don't want to go on and on and say that. But people who have information that you really should know and are able to compare against the information that the applicant gives. So I hope that, you know, you can be a little bit more reasonable. Can you listen to people or a little bit more flexible? Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Abate and Swami Sagananda.
Good evening. I'm Joe Abate from Yogaville. And I'll be representing Yogaville. I'm in Sam's District 5. And I appreciate the opportunity that I had to call some of you and discuss this. And given the opportunity to serve, I hope I can help you on the Subcommittee. And I promise you, I won't tape anything. I was just joking with Sam Smith about that. But I had a chance to serve on the Committee Advisory Group with Dominion and the county to address some of these issues that are in front of you. And I've spent about two and a half years studying compressor stations and seals and turbines. Went to the Leesburg station, had questions there. And I know we're dealing with an excellent team of people from Dominion, top-notch people, okay? So it's not a matter of quality company. They're Six Sigma, which means in quality assurance, they're right at the top. What I'm going to address is that I went and saw this movie, Deep Water Horizon. Now, it is a different animal. It is an oil rig, but they deal with methane. And there are some similarities that pervade. It was the deepest of its kind at the time. And we have a very big compressor station, one of the biggest coming in. Now Dominion can request, assert, or permit for a 57,000 horsepower compressor station. And then in a year or two or less, they can get a certification from FERC to put another 7,500 horsepower or more. That's how they go from 50,000 to 80,000 to 100,000. So as part of our consideration, we need to understand this process. You're not just approving a 57,000 horsepower compressor station. You're opening the door for Dominion. After this is done, they only go to FERC and they add turbine after turbine. Now, I'm not saying that that's completely dangerous. But I just, for our information, we should know that this happens. It did happen at Leesburg. They added a 7,500 horsepower turbine. And they didn't show but 1,400 horsepower at the time we went there. They had turned off the bigger turbine and they had only shown us the operation sound. And we didn't get to hear a blowdown being muffled. So these are all things that, when I'm looking at someone doing work for me, I like to go see their work. And I like to see it demonstrated to me. Because they're having subcontractors perform this. So in Deep Water Horizon in the Mexico Gulf, this was the biggest methane explosion in the history of the United States. How did a company like British Petroleum, who won seven years of safety awards, somehow come to this point where they have one of the worst accidents in the history of the United States? Well, first of all, they had remote monitoring. And they had some people on board, but they were under the control of the prime contractor who was then instructing subcontractors what they could do. Now, we've all had work done by subcontractors. So what we have here is the prime contractor, Dominion, Six Sigma, top company, British Petroleum, top company, instructing subcontractors. And it just didn't work out perfectly. Now, in addition, they fell behind schedule, 43 days. That put pressure on the prime to push the subs. We've all been in a case like this. Building my house, I had to wait a lot, extra time. And my wife was pushing me and I was pushing the subs. So this is where I am. So they were 43 days behind schedule. It's costing them $50 million. Well, guess what? Dominion is 360 days behind schedule. And they, in the Farmville Herald, are talking to their subs to pick up the speed, to catch up on this project that they're a year behind. And finally, all these elements combined to result in a simple test that they decided wasn't necessary because it would take extra time and might show bad information, which would stall them another so many weeks. Just that simple test was bypassed and resulted in the largest methane explosion in the history of the United States. Nothing that BP or these contractors had ever experienced before. So I please urge you to see this movie, which is available, I think, in Farmville and certainly in Charlottesville. My wife took me because she likes these disaster movies. So I'll provide more information. I don't want to waste more of your time. But there's a surplus in Southern Virginia and North Carolina and all over the United States in natural gas. They've shut down 40% of the wells. So there's no drastic need. Thank you, gentlemen.
My name is Swami Sagananda and I'm in District Number 5. And that was my main concern, but he articulated it better, so I'm going to skip that. And I'm going to go to Number 2. I'm going to read my statement. Union Hill Community is in the probable impact radius of the compressor station and pipeline. In two churches and over 100 residents lie within the probable impact radius of any explosion or fire in the Union Hill community. The probable impact radius is determined by the Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration. This highlights the danger to the Buckingham citizens that could result from any change of zoning for this industrial installation. The lack of quick emergency response, threat to safety and property, and poor emergency planning by Dominion is key to violating the protection in the Planning Commission's comprehensive plan for the agricultural zone 1. And lastly, the routing of the pipeline and placement of the compressor station converge to create a great risk to our community. And Yogaville, our community, lies within the probable impact radius of the Atlantic Coast Pipeline Route as well. So I urge you to, and I know you will, look at this very, very carefully. Thank you so much.
Chad Oba and then Kathy Mosley.
Good evening, everyone. I'm in Chet Maxx's District 6. I have a very short statement tonight. And I want to begin by saying that I really appreciate that you have really slowed down. And it seems as though you really are considering things that we've presented to you. And I really, really, truly appreciate that because this is such an important decision. And what I... What was that? The valuing of what well might be short-term economic interests because of the diminishing Maceless shale reserves. And I don't think anyone's talked about that much, but it is diminishing and it's getting harder to pull this stuff out. And the low market demand, which I think you have heard about for gas, and the unsubstantiated revenue that Dominion has promised. That needs to be substantiated. I certainly hope you ask that of Dominion. And what is not being considered really, it doesn't seem, is the cost to human life. And because of that, I really feel that this necessitates a need for, to consider the health impacts. That's my main concern. And especially when these impacts are going to fall to a very small, discreet group of people in that impact zone. So we're being asked to be a sacrifice zone for a very questionable venture. So I really appreciate you moving very slowly and really considering all of this for those of us who really are going to bear the biggest impact here in the county. Thank you.
My name is Kathy Mosley. I live at 1296 Union Hill Road. I have a lot of concern about the new generation. And I think I hand it in. Did you all get a chance to read it? Were you... Are you going to respond to it?
Want me to do it?
Yeah.
Robert Tools of Oregon amended for small groups, which we use. You can ask us questions. We cannot answer. But if we choose, we can ask you a question and you must answer them. So I do not believe you're going to get any questions answered tonight. I would be glad for you to answer them. We will make notes like we requested you to do earlier tonight and consider them. It's not a public forum. It's a public comment period. Thank you.
Lakshmi Fajord and then Swami Dayananda.
Hi, I'm Lakshmi Fajord and I'm here and I'm going to represent Friends of Buckingham. And I'm a landowner in District 5 and have been since 1979. So I sent you a document earlier today. And some of you either read it or had the exact same ideas that I did in looking at the health risk assessment that was submitted by Dominion as if it were a scientific study. And I'm extremely concerned. This is the work that I do. I look at studies and I'm on a board that reviews and peer reviews papers and scholarly papers. And what we're looking for is, are things like who wrote it? So authorship is incredibly important. And the fact that on page 1 it says that that report that Mrs. Picard stood and, you know, held often and showed it as a scientific study, there are no authors. It just says FERC staff. Others will comment about who pays their salaries. Many times, you know, but I don't have science about that. But what I can tell you is when you don't know who the authors are, then you ask yourself, "Well, why don't you?" Because even on Dominion's cultural reports, they put an author. The cultural reports that they file with FERC. The person that wrote them has a name on there. But this study is not a study because it does not. And therefore, we can't check your credentials. We cannot call the person up. And then the data, it's not a minor point that the data was all collected by Dominion and provided to FERC. Or possibly FERC wrote this and then Dominion read it and signed off on it. That is not unheard of. And so I wrote to you that this is a huge problem in medicine. Industry-sponsored so-called studies. And it creates a huge problem. I asked you to consider that the only compressor stations that they were comparing had one engine, and the largest of which was 7,000 horsepower. And they were then asking you to think about that health study and then compare it with 14 engines, you know, 10 big ones and... I'm sorry, four big ones and 10 microturbines that add up to 57,683 horsepower, which was in Dominion's most recent July 16, 2016 amended permit, or my source air permit. So I have to go by their figures. So as you can see, that's, you know, 50,000 plus horsepower less. So again, not science. You cannot extrapolate from that. I asked you to think about the idea of the methods that they use, the risk assessment. You know, they, she made it sound like that is really clear science. But in fact, it's sort of like saying, here's a population. How many people in all of Buckingham County are going to get mesothelioma, which is the condition you get from exposure to asbestos? That's a risk assessment study. A weight of evidence study is, I'm a doctor and I have these patients who come in with mesothelioma and they have the condition. And then I'm going to, excuse me, see how many of them worked with asbestos. And then I'm going to say, make that connection between mesothelioma. So this is what we're asking you to do. We're asking you to look past this kind of faulty science. It's not science. It's actually an industry report. There's other concerns. Mr. Zink, first of all, let me say thank you so much for all of the really incredible questions that you asked. I'm very touched and impressed by the amount of time you put into it and want to thank you. Mr. Zink talked about PHMSA. PHMSA itself, that regulatory agency, has written quite a bit about the discrepancies between rural pipeline materials, distances between valves. One other person talked about this, and the urban, more urban centers. Please look into that. Promise us that you'll look into that because that's huge. The fact of remote monitoring and nine jobs, they seem to be connected. There's, in that SUP, I saw nine jobs, only one of them is full-time. And so I don't understand how all these people are going to be moving to Buckingham for jobs that are part-time and covering many different compressor stations. So no, this is not a job generator, as far as I can tell from their special news permit just close to leaving those things. And finally, I wanted to mention that Mr. Tom said something that was kind of difficult to hear, which was, you know, Buckingham is too beautiful to put solar. And I'm saying, "Well, wait a second, you know, that isn't going to do emissions and so forth." But it's not too beautiful to put a heavy industrial facility in an A1 agricultural zone. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for this opportunity. So my name is Swami Dayananda. I live in District Number 5. I'm here to speak a little bit also about this FERC study that they... And well-being of your people, our people, our brothers and sisters as top priority. Thank you very much.
Nelson Bailey and Paul Wilson.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Nelson Bailey. I live in the 5th District. I am a retired merchant seaman and sailor. I moved to Buckingham for clean air, clean water, and peace and love. Benzene is among the gases that are listed in the compressor station emissions. There is no safe amount of this gas that a human can absorb or breathe without protective equipment. As a member of the maritime community for over 35 years, having been licensed as a designated person in charge or as the man that spoke to Dominion that was the engineer for the compressor station, I was in charge of the transfer of the cargo. We as mariners, as well as most petroleum employees, were required to participate in an annual industry-wide medical program. This medical monitoring was for the determining parts per million levels of benzene gas molecules in your blood. If the levels of benzene were above a certain parts per million count, then you were required to seek other employment of types of non-petroleum shipboard jobs, such as dry cargo, car carrier, container ship, but not tankers until your benzene blood level amount dropped. A United States Coast Guard benzene card was issued stating that it was safe for an individual to return to petroleum tanker assignment if so desired. One of my concerns is will there be any help in monitoring or protective personal equipment issued for benzene by Dominion to residents? If so, this plan should be made available to the public and monitoring medical providers. I do have grave concerns over particle emission and deteriorating air quality from this proposed compressor station. I implore you to be wise in your forward thinking by making all project steps and required construction plans or permit for ACP available for public view and perusal by yourself and residents here in Buckingham. The Department of Forestry has recently denied it a meeting pending for not answering 300 required questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I represent, I'm Paul Wilson, Pastor Paul Wilson. I represent Union Hill, Union Hill Baptist Church. As you all know who I am, I believe. Thank you. You're asking great questions tonight. I was impressed. I was really impressed. I'm not here to give a sermon, but there were some things that I just wanted to bring to your attention. First of all, we in the Union Hill and Buckingham, in the Union Hill, Union Hill community, we have a right to be scared. We certainly have a right. We have some questions that we're going to... One question is, why is everyone hiding behind an LLC? That question needs to be answered. Everything. LLC. Why? Because there's some inherent dangers that can, risks that can pop up. There's a question about, we feel there need to be more than a billion-dollar reserve somewhere to protect the citizens of Buckingham County for health reasons and loss of property. We wanted to let you know that FERC, the Federal Energy Regulation Commission, that it cannot be trusted. Why? Because it's funded by the industry itself. That's where they get their money from. And it is in their interest to continue to be funded, to always act in behalf of the initiative requests that the industry makes. The Department of Environment and Quality here in Virginia, it cannot be trusted because our good governor, he purposely underfunded the Department of Energy, you know, of Environment and Quality so that they would have to rely on the opinions and reports from entities such as Dominion Power. That's where they get that basic information from. They tell you about the possibility of tapping into the gas line that's coming to Buckingham County. I heard no one tell you that it's going to cost more than $5 billion for, to tap in that line. I live in Amelia County, but I spend more time in Buckingham lately than I do in Amelia. And so I actually feel like I'm a resident of Amelia, excuse me, Buckingham. So I think I have a responsibility to let you know that there is a cost for tapping in. They talk about there's no significant impact. There is no significant, that's the word that they use, impact on health. I call that into question. But we all have the polished people like Dominion has. And we've done our research as well. And we've had to go out of state and take reports and listen to other things because there's so much technical stuff and it's very confusing. They are so polished. Their job is to sell you on what they're presenting. They've already taken for granted. I was told by one of their representatives that they bought the land here in Buckingham because they knew that they were going to get the permit. Now, that's taking advantage of, that's like we buying a car. No driver's license, no insurance, no tax, but I'm going to drive my car anyhow, you know? So they're taking advantage of the situation. So they're taking advantage of the situation. Most likelihood, I was writing some notes here. Okay, let me look at what else is here. I wanted to ask you about the newly subcommittee that you're establishing. I want to know if the public is going to be in on this. I too was part of the committee sponsored by Dominion here in Buckingham County. They flew me up to look at a compressor station, but I was like a whip in the Bible. They almost convinced me, but I saw, you know, through the shield. I need to ask you another question. Dominion needs to explain, what will be lost or what would really happen in a catastrophic ground zero situation such as an explosion? What would be lost? How many homes would be destroyed? How many lives at midnight when nobody's around? Everything is so remote. But how many houses, how much property would be destroyed? They don't tell you any of that. Commitments for domestic use that Dominion talks about is mainly by the subdivisions that Dominion owns, they're contracted with. It's not any new use. And so that's all I wanted to bring to your attention, that you all be really aware of really what's going on, what's going on. And I look at you all and I believe that you love the Lord like I do. And I think that you pray about your decisions that you will make. And God bless you.
Thank you.
Carlos, what was your last name? And then after that will be Adrian Jones. After that would be David Ball.
Hi, my name is Carlos Adostegui. I live at 4443 South James River Highway. I didn't come tonight. I wasn't going to say anything, but I heard some things during the hearing that I thought I would bring up. Up until a couple of years ago, when I had the opportunity to retire to full-time farming, my wife and I had a computer consulting company. We did accounting software for medium-sized companies. Our clients were located in London, Buenos Aires, Mexico City, San Francisco, Seattle, Boston, New York, Washington DC, Miami. So they were far flung. And we supported all of that from Buckingham County by way of the internet. And here where we are in the western part of the county, we don't have much in the way of fiber optics or DSL or anything like that, so we rely on satellite. Part of our responsibilities once a year was to do a system upgrade, which required taking the company down, close of business on Friday, converting the data over the weekend and then having them up running first thing in the morning. I could guarantee that no matter what we did to schedule one of these conversions, we would have a gigantic thunderstorm come and bark itself over our satellite. Okay, that made for some very long and scary nights, hoping that we were able to get that. When the discussion earlier turned to what would happen if terrorists targeted the compressor station, my first thought was about that satellite and those thunderstorms. What Dominion seems to be, or ACP seems to be proposing, is that they're going to manage this compressor station remotely from West Virginia, and that is going to be done through that microwave tower. Okay, I'm not a terrorist. I've not had any terrorist training. But I can tell you that if I were to want to cause a great deal of hurt to Buckingham, the first thing I would do would be to target that microwave tower. So I think at the next hearing, when these folks come back, you should ask them what kind of redundance they have in those communications? What happens if that microwave tower goes down? Do we now have a rogue compressor station that cannot be managed, cannot be shut down? I think that is a frightening question, and we don't know the answer to that. So I think, you know, if you could, please, I'd saddle my hands not to jump up, ask the question right then. But I think it's, you know, it's an important question. We're less than, we're about a half mile from the compressor station. If that public goes out, we're toast. Okay? We need to be careful of that. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Just to ease your mind a little bit, we've got conditions that will cover all of that, believe me.
Good, thank you.
Commissioners, thank you very much for your thoughtful and very deliberate process. I'm very impressed. But the slideshow caught my attention.
For the record, your name?
Oh, David Ball, District Three, Andersonville area. Apologies. But again, thank you. The slideshow that they presented really caught my attention. And part of that was, they went a little too far on the slides and then backed up because they didn't want you to see something. And I wonder what it is they didn't want you to see. But somebody who has been educated on college, learning about the scientific method, seeing that slideshow, there was nothing there scientific. There was no evidence of methodologies, how they collected, where they collected, sample size, calibration of equipment, source, all those questions, and a lot of unanswered questions about that. Up part of it, as a Buckingham citizen and somebody who moved here because of the quality of the environment, I take offense to the fact that they imply that we have all these toxic chemicals floating around in our environment. From my experience, the only place they're going to find that is if they sat next to a piece of machinery and sampled the air coming out of that machine. Now, to tell you benzene, a little bit about benzene, it's a chemical that in the process of mirroring, we can take benzene, mix it with silver nitrate, and we create mirrors because the benzene frees up the metals. So that's one of the properties of benzene. Tyuene, tyuene, I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it is a glue. It's an adhesive substance. When I worked in the medical laboratory, we used to make up our own mixture of tyuene and we would tote slides so that then they could be viewed under microscopes, but it protected the specimen. So this idea that there's formaldehyde in high quantities, formaldehyde is a very serious chemical. And when you breathe it, it can actually begin to deteriorate your lungs. It's basically going to embolize you from the inside out. So to say that there is that much formaldehyde naturally in the air, I dispute it. I dispute the numbers that they give because I don't think they're realistic. And honestly, I question a lot of what they do. Now, what I did have in the letter that I gave you last week is, I think that a berm built around this complex, if you do approve it, a high berm higher than the facility something that contains it, because trees are not going to be an adequate buffer, guaranteed. And you want something, and if there is a leak or an explosion or whatever, it's going to contain or direct that blast. So that's a good method of protecting that site, minimizing impact to the surrounding areas.
Andrew Tyler and then Laney Sullivan. Louis Zeller.
Thank you. My name is Louis Zeller and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Blue Ridge Environmental Defense League, a Virginia corporation. My comments have to do with the procedures and of the Planning Commission and some of the issues that remain to be addressed. I was very interested to hear the questions asked by the Planning Commission tonight. And I do have the following comments and suggestions on procedure. Your own bylaws at Section 8-3-4 state that once speakers are heard and the public hearing is closed, applicant may have the opportunity to address the commission. And then it says, additional questions from the public may be submitted to the applicant through the chairman. And the applicant shall submit his or her responses to the questions through the chairman. So I guess my comment is most directly pointed at you Chairman Bigford in that questions of the responses made by the applicant in this case, Atlantic Coast Pipeline or Dominion Virginia Power. We have the ability, and in fact, according to the bylaws, the privilege of having questions passed through you to the applicant and they must answer. It says shall submit their responses to the questions through the chairman. There are several issues. This is not an abstract discussion. For example, the final commenter at the last public hearing was a colleague of mine, Reverend Charles Utley, and he raised this, the issues of environmental justice. There were no questions regarding environmental justice here tonight. There was a particular question, I noticed tonight, coming from this commission regarding vapor and smoke. And your question was deflected, as if it was just a heat signature showing up on infrared. That's half true. You don't get a heat signature unless you have a substance, in this case vapor and smoke heated, even at infrared levels. So what was shown in video was a plume of pollution. Your question was deflected tonight for some reason and was not answered directly. I submit that this planning commission would do well to heed and seek out questions from members of the public who have some experience for some questions or are simply suspicious of an agency which comes in with a multimillion dollar project promising the moon and leaving the people of Union Hill and Union Grove holding the bag. Thank you very much. Those are my questions. I think the question came up in the last hearing, a suggestion, which in one word is rebuttal. What we're asking for is rebuttal. And the questions embodied in the concern for the new generation raised here by Ms. Kathy Mosley, I think the commission should answer regardless of its intentions, regardless of whether it seeks to have further input or not. This is a correspondence from a community member. It seems to me only right and proper, and in fact courteous, to pay some kind of attention to the member here of the community. Me, you can ignore, I don't live here. But I do have information to offer, and it is constructive. And I will continue to submit questions to you Chairman Bigford under Section 834. Thank you very much.
That's all the names we have this time.